Community Schools Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. Could all please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance?
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Entertained a motion to approve the agenda is presented.
So moved.
Mr. Brubaker?
Second.
Mr. Hensley, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Okay, motion carries. Oh. Oh, okay, here we go. Uh... Sorry, lost my place here. Uh, roll call. Mr. Raymer?
Present.
Mr. Bucher Zapset? Mr. Brubaker?
Here.
Mr. Espisette?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Hensley?
Here.
I'm here.
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 Okay, everybody's here. Uh, we have no presentat-- oh, hearing of patrons. We have no patrons that would wish to speak. If I seem a little out of sorts here, we got a brand-new agenda and a new operating system, so just bear with me. We'll get through this. So we have no presentations, we have no recognitions. Financial report, Tanya.
I'm gonna, Tony, put it up on the screen.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. So, looking first at our education fund revenue, uh, we received eight million, or eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. We are at about forty-three percent of the revenue we should have received at this point. So that's right on course with where we should be for, uh, the first five months of the year. So this is running through the end of May, so, uh... Then to do the education fund expenses on the next slide. We had, um, expenses of, for the month of seven hundred and eighty thousand, so we did take in a little more revenue than we had in expenses. Always good to see. So we've rece-- we have expended four million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and some change, which is forty-four percent. So we are right on track to be at fif-- about fifty percent of our expenditures for the month, or through the first six months. So we are right on track for that, looking good on our, um, revenue and expenditures in the education fund. We went down just a touch, or I guess in the next slide, I want to add to the next slide. In the next slide, I must've cut off a line, and I apologize about that because, um, we should have a final balance on there. But it is on, it is on the reports that I shared with you, and I apologize when I made this slide, I cut that line off. Let me jump to that, give you that balance. The, the education fund balance is one point two million dollars, uh, with some change. So it's, we are a little less than we were in January, but that's usually right where we track. We will decrease our expenses. Uh, our paras are not working for the, uh, most of the paras are not working all summer, so that will decrease our expenses for the next couple of months. Uh, so we'll move ahead to the operations fund. Operations fund revenue for May, uh, we still don't, we still did, would not receive our tax distribution, so we have received two, sixty-two thousand dollars for the month, and we are, um, which is two hundred and eighty-six thousand, which is only seven percent of our projected budget, uh, revenue. But we should be getting, uh, I estimate approximately one point seven million dollars here this month of June, which will bring us, uh, back to whole in that fund, um, which is normal, as you don't get your property taxes until after that. So we'll move to the expenditures. Where we had three hundred and nine thousand dollars in expenditures, um, bringing us to, uh, one point eight million dollar, or, sorry, that's our annual budget, one point five million dollars, uh, in expenditures for this first five months, which is forty-five percent. Again, we're tracking right on the percentages that I would expect us to be through the month of May. Our total, moving forward to the summary on the next slide. This one does have a negative balance of eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, but again, we'll get our one point seven million dollars here in June. Uh, I expect that any day, they just sent out the distribution to the city, um, so I expect ours in the next couple of days. That will bring that fund whole. School nutrition, uh, we did not get, if you look at our revenue, our revenue is down a little bit this month, and we did not receive our distribution from the state for reimbursement until July, June first. So it missed the cutoff for the, for your reports. But, uh, we did, 'cause I, as I was running my reports, I'm like, wait a minute, there, we're missing this, but it came in the next day. So we are, so while this month does reflect a little less, uh, with only getting twenty thousand, uh, we did, um, bring that back up the next month. So, again, those, those revenues, thirty-seven percent of our, uh, annual estimated, so that's right on track with where we should be. We are a little higher on our expenditures in the next slide. We had ninety-five thousand, we're at fifty-one percent through the month of May. I'm not overtly concerned since we will have fewer expenses for the summer months. So, uh, we are tracking just a little bit high, but those will decrease here. Uh, so the summary then for year to, for school nutrition, we do have a total fund balance as of May thirty-first, so of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and then we did receive our reimbursement for April's reimbursement, the first of June. So that fund balance has come up significantly then. It will also be getting May's. Normally, the state pays it on the twenty-eighth of the month, so I would expect that we'd actually receive two, two re-- uh, revenues from the state this month. That are the, there were no significant expenditures in our textbook rental fund. There will be starting in June. We've begun purchasing the textbooks that were approved, so those, they'll all have a report for the June Board meeting on those. Were there any questions on the financials as presented? Again, it was unusual, the state actually just delayed that distribution. I assume it has to do with the holiday in there.
Yeah. Okay, no more questions on the financial report? Esser funds?
Uh, actually, we received, uh, two of our Esser amendments, Esser one and Esser two, have now been approved by the state, so we are, uh, working at getting those funds expensed and then reimbursed.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, uh, board, in your package you have the minutes. Is there any questions or corrections on the minutes on your consent agenda? Nope. Okay, uh, we'll go to grants. Oops. Okay, uh, click enter on the... Okay, this is different than what we normally do here. What's, do you want to do this, Kyle?
What are you?
We're doing grants.
Grants? Okay. So, um, we had, we had received one grant, and, uh, this was from the state of Indiana. They had a five hundred thousand dollars' worth of grant money. It was a competitive grant, um, in the area of, uh, manufacturing and STEM. And so we were one of six recipients, um, from around the state, and we're receiving a hundred thousand dollars, um, for that. So we are looking at putting that money into, uh, our digital manufacturing industry for point O, equipment.
Questions, comments, board? Okay, now we'll move to donations. Uh, I'll go ahead and do these. Uh, we had a two hundred and fifty-dollar donation to Manchester Junior Senior High School FFA from Cortova Agris-- Agri Science. We had one thousand two hundred and fifty dol-- dollars to Manchester Junior Senior High School from Ag Plus. We had a one thousand two hundred and fifty-dollar donation to the Manchester Junior Senior High School FFA Land of Lakes Foundation. Uh, we had a seven hundred and forty-dollar donation from the Manchester, to the Manchester Junior Senior High School, uh, library. That was from the Community Foundation of Wabash County, facilitating for Manchester Library an audiovisual endowment. And we had a ninety-two thousand dollar donation to MES and MIS for students who academically at risk K through five from the Eisenberger Wolf Revocable Trust. And with that, and if there's no questions or comments, I would ask for an approval of the consent agenda. All are proven, thank you for the donations. Mr. Hensley? Mr. Brubaker?
I'll second, and I, can you elaborate just a little bit, Kyle, on that, that trust fund?
Yeah, so, um, uh...
I think I know the basics.
Yeah, so, uh, Mary Eisenberger Wolf, um, she actually lived, uh, and I'm gonna, I'll probably get this wrong, I believe it was out in Oklahoma, uh, and, um, she had passed away a while back and, um, had established a trust. And, uh, then the person who was in charge, um, of, of maintaining that trust had also passed away, and so we were looking at, um, dissolving it. And so they went to, um, different places that were significant in that family's, um, history. And, uh, her, I believe it is her great-grandfather or grandfather was once the postmaster in North Manchester, um, and also served on the Indiana General Assembly. So I don't know if she'd ever been to North Manchester herself, but, um, because this was a part of her family's legacy, um, they decided to, um, donate part of that trust, uh, to the schools. And, and their only requirement was that it went to, uh, help students in grades K through five, um, that, uh, need some academic support. So they left it pretty open-ended and trusted us that, uh, we would use it for those purposes. So it's a great thing. Unfortunately, I don't believe any of the families around to thank them, but, um, what an awesome thing to, you know, to support those students.
Thank you, just in case anybody's watching that knows something about it.
Yeah.
Okay, we have motion and a second for approving the consent. Any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Motion carries. Recommendations for Approval Employment, Superintendent Whelan?
Yeah, so we're recommending, uh, Ryan Oosley for, uh, the STEM and math interventionist position, and we just added this, um, this was a new position for us, and so that was approved at one of our previous meetings. Uh, Gina Catron as a summer, uh, parent for summer school. Betsy Keiger as a special ed, uh, paraprofessional, uh, starting with this next school year. And then Matty Kearns is a volleyball assistant coach, uh, starting this year. So those are the employment pieces.
Okay, uh, let's go ahead and do the resignations.
Okay.
Two?
So, for resignations, Kristen Buick as the first grade, um, chair, so she's still gonna be a part of our team, but it's just a resignation, the chair position. Alexandria Hagar Gucci as a paraprofessional. Betsy Keiger, um, as the media tech out at MIS, she's just moving into MES as one of our, uh, paraprofessionals there. Uh, Joe Montel is the kitchen manager at MIS. Jessica Metzger as the CNA that went between MES and MIS. Uh, Cassandra Lucas as a seventh-grade volleyball coach. Uh, Regina Harris as a kitchen staff member for the junior senior high school. Sarah Steely as a reading professional, um, at the junior senior high school. And then Kelly Comett as a family and consumer science teacher at the junior senior high school.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve seven point one, the recommendations for employment, and seven point two, the resignations.
So moved.
Mr. Raymer, second. Mr. Brubaker, any comments or questions?
I know, I know some of those people have worked at various schools for a while, and they're all gonna be missed in their positions, and thank you for your service.
And I would agree, they, we do have quite a few years of, um, support for our students and our personnel there listed under the resignation, so, yeah. I, I know that some of them have some really interesting endeavors coming up, and I wish them the best of luck with that, and thank them for everything they've done up to this point.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Motion carries, six oh. MES Student Parent Handbook, second reading. Mr. Whelan?
Yeah, so we did the first reading, um, last, at last board meeting, and, um, I had not received any questions or comments over it, so, I mean, if there's things you want me to address, um, I'll try to, but, um... Looks like we need to update the logo on there. Yes, we do.
Okay, uh, let's do seven point three and seven point four, MES and MIS Student Parent Handbook. Could do those as one motion? To approve. Mr. Brubaker, Mr. Hensley, second. Comments, questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Motion carries, six oh.
I do have a question. When are we gonna see the high school?
Uh, the first reading is tonight, and then, uh, the second reading will be at the next meeting. It's down in discussion.
Okay, all right, good deal. Seven point five, MCS twenty twenty-two, twenty-three Clinical Services Memo of Understanding. Mr. Whelan?
Yeah, so, um, you know, one of the things we want to continue to, um, support is, uh, mental health within our, our students. Uh, we've currently worked with, have an MOU with the Bowen Center for quite some time. Four County, which is, uh, located just off of twenty-four, um, on this side of Peru, uh, provides similar services, and it's someone that, um, you know, I have worked with in the past, uh, in my previous position. So really, it's just providing, uh, other options for parents who are, um, wanting to provide, uh, or receive some additional services. Uh, this will all be, you know, by parent request, um, but it does allow, uh, under, with, uh, parent permission for, um, the people providing those services to see our kids, uh, within our school building. So, um, I've had really good experience with Four County. Um, I think it's always good to be able to provide, you know, parents with options whenever possible.
Entertained a motion to approve the Memo of Understanding, seven point five is presented in your packet.
So moved.
I'm sorry, Mr. Raymer? Mr. Shaw? Discussion, questions?
So this is basically, uh, another round of service besides Bowen?
Yes. So there's no, um, financial responsibility from the school corporation. Um, it's just more they, they do a lot of work with, uh, you know, K to twelve students, um, and they're in this area. And so, you know, just to provide people with another option is really what that's for. So we'll still utilize the Bowen Center, but also have, uh, Four County available. And, you know, so if a parent's reaching out for assistance, we can give them options.
Does Four...
Well, I was just gonna say, like, I, we'll talk about this in legislative and then, then tonight, basically, but I would still, you know, since I got on the board, I would still like to see an internal resource. I mean, this is, this is good, but, you know, it's been, I think I've been on the board, what, four and a half years? Last meeting, kinda got laughed at, you know, we had law enforcement in a meeting, and I told, and I was told it was number one or number two on the list to kind of look at, so, um, just gonna let, I'll make my feelings known later, but, you know, I think this is a good deal, though, thank you. Options.
Four County's, they, they do more work with kids than the Bowen Center, is that correct?
I don't think I have enough knowledge to... I know they work plenty with students. I, I don't know what other services they provide, but I know that they work plenty with students.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, all in favor of approving the Memo of Understanding? Signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Motion carries, six oh. Addition of a STEM position at Manchester Junior Senior High School. Superintendent Whelan?
So, you know, when I, uh, started on and started looking at our course offerings at the junior senior high school, um, you know, I felt like we were spread a little thin in the areas of the computer science and engineering. And, you know, that's never a good thing. When you look at, uh, the, you know, Hoosier top fifty, or hot fifty, uh, jobs, and, you know, it's something they put out every year, uh, there's a lot of them that come down to falling underneath, uh, that STEM classification. And so, um, you know, I think it's in our best interest, looking at not only what the demand is out there, but also the current course, um, load that we're trying to be able to offer our students. Uh, to add another position in here, uh, one of the things that, um, as a state requirement, we need to have, uh, computer science options at each grade level. Um, and without having a designated, you know, com- computer science person, then we're spreading that position pretty thin. And so, um, I don't want to pigeonhole this and say it is just computer science, um, because we're still working out things with our, uh, with our other, um, people with these licenses, but, uh, you know, promoting it as a STEM position, I think we can find someone, hopefully with multiple certifications, who has some flexibility, um, and, and has a larger skill set, so...
Motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to add a STEM position at Manchester Senior High School. All moves. Mr. Hensley?
Second.
Mr. Shaw? Discussion, questions?
So you intend to pay for this with the vacant fax position, correct?
Yes.
What are you gonna do about fax?
Uh, we do already have a fax teacher. Um, we had two positions for fax.
All right.
Um, and so we still have, we're still able to offer those courses.
Does this alleviate some of the load for Mr. Hooks, then?
Yes.
And I, and I would like to say, you know, what the advanced technology, or SACA as I call it, or whatever, I think, you know, that's kind of getting chewed in, is we keep saying it's manufacturing. I know Ivy Tech does Ignite program that kind of sells it like that, but that program's not about just manufacturing. More heavy agriculture, or, I mean, the hospitals in the area have that technology, so hopefully we brand that a little differently than, than advanced manufacturing, or something along that line. But it's, it's a pretty broad base for learning for the kids, so...
Well, I'll tell you, one of the hopes, so when Mr. Hooks was brought in, um, you know, that was, uh, part of that was that, um, industrial technology. Um, and currently, because of the other courses we're trying to offer, we don't have anything in that, in that realm that we're currently offering. So we don't have any, you know, shop-type classes, um, within our district. So we're hoping that that, we can bring at least a little bit of that back for those students who are, um, inclined to go that direction.
This isn't something that has to be negotiated or anything, right, with the EDA?
I've already talked to them.
Okay, so we're good to go? Any other questions? All in favor, seven point six?
Do we have a ballpark of what? Go ahead.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Motion carries, six oh. Legislative update.
I think the, don't have a lot of legislative update. I mean, the, the, the news is the shootings, right, as far as legislation. We're back on gun control and all that stuff, but guns don't kill people, people do. So we, you know, we've got a meeting tonight, basically, to talk about this, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Heartland update. I spoke a little bit about this last month, last meeting. The EDA has ruled that high school kids cannot use the proposed new building at Heartland. That's Economic Development Administration's, and it was, uh, emergency disaster relief grant. So the Department of Education covers education grants. So we had three superintendents there, Mr. Hensley, myself, the rest of the Heartland Board, and we have elected since high school, students cannot use it to withdraw from the grant and the project. Uh, the county plans on... Appealing, I guess is the correct word, or asking for an amendment to their, the grant to go ahead and build the adult training center in Wabash. It just won't be at Heartland or on Heartland property. So, anybody's got any other questions? My email and phone number's on our website, give, go ahead and give me a call. And, uh, Heartland had a great year. We got six hundred and sixty kids signed up for next year in a building that Houses Five Hundred was built to House Five Hundred. So there's some difficult choices had to be made this year. There's some kids on waiting lists, and we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow night and hopefully talk about, uh, an expansion project for Heartland. And I'll probably have Mr. Hobbs here next month, uh, asking for money. Building down there's gonna need a roof, and the HVA's gonna need to be H... HVAC is gonna need to be upgraded, so, other than that, that's it for Heartland. Superintendent Whelan, Parent Handbook, eight point three?
Oh, so, yeah, so that, um, once again, this is the first reading, so it's been, um, it's in your, uh, board packet, and it's also on the website, so, uh, if you had any, uh, questions, Dr. Libby is here, um, but then, otherwise, we'll, um, look at that second reading, uh, at the next board meeting.
Yeah, one question. Dr. Libby, what, if you can answer this, what two or three areas come under the most scrutiny in this handbook?
In what?
In this, in this handbook, what two or three areas do you come under the most scrutiny, or cause you the most?
Harper.
Harper?
I don't know, I forgot to turn it on, sorry.
First of all, Dory would be the one to tell you about Harper. But just for, over the years, uh, it's certainly, you know, discipline and attempts, right? I mean, that's where a lot of people end up in, in that area real quick when they open up the handbook. Most of the stuff doesn't change, there's a lot of, there's some clerical things that we changed this year. Changed the squire cafe to the bean. I mean, just, you know, moved some things around, but really not a lot of big, heavy hitters. You know, how do you deal with the tents? How do you deal with, uh, tardies? I mean, tardies are probably the number one thing, right? Kids running late to class. Well, we just came through... came through COVID, right, and, and a year ago, I gave them a little extra time, 'cause we had one-way flow, and kids are still late, you know, it's not like seven, eight minutes made it any better, and kids are still going like just two doors down and still are late to class, so, tardies will be, regardless, whatever school I've been at, tardies are always, always there, I mean, but my philosophy is, and I try to put this to my team, is keep the main thing the main thing, let's not get hung up on niffling dime things that have no really bearing on learning, 'cause that's where our focus has to be, is what's impacting learning. Yeah, if a kid comes in ten minutes late, that's impacting learning, okay, and so we really try to encourage kids to be there, I mean, we've got all kinds of things that kids will build up to, they get lunch detentions, they get detentions, they can build up, the Friday night schools, there's consequences for being tardy, but we've not had the silver bullet, that's one thing. Right now, vaping's kinda just, you know, it's kinda a hot thing for us, but it's not always been like that, smoking kinda went away for a while, now it's kinda, we're, you know, just dealing with the vape pits, and they have vape sensors, but they cost like twelve hundred dollars for a bathroom, and I think John Higgins has a couple at Heartland, and he's like, don't waste your money, because it's still a fiasco, even if you got a vape sensor to try to deal with kids, you can't put a camera in there in the bathroom, so you're trying to figure out, filter out, who's coming in and out of bathrooms, so, I don't know about three things, but those would be the two big head heavy hits right now.
Okay. Any other questions, board?
Do we, do we not have, like, how, how bullying and stuff like that, that's not a, we pretty much got that under control, just from your viewpoint?
Well, I will tell you, it's all about being proactive, and if you start to see signs of that, is get out in front of that as quick as possible, and so, you know, there's a definition for that, and it's, it's constantly, it's an occurring thing, not a one-time deal, and we try to get it stopped right away, like as soon as something happens, inappropriate conduct, that's something our staff's pretty good at all, we don't wanna have kids, like, feeling fearful or worried about coming to school, we got enough anxiety right now, 'cause of all this stuff that's coming out of COVID, there's just a natural anxiety out there, when kids went distant learning, we're fighting just to get them back at school, and, and that had a lot to do with they were secluded, and now we wanna try to get them back with, but, you know, that's been kinda more of an issue right now, is kids, there's just that little bit of getting back in with the population, not so much the, the bullying, like, I keep getting this kid coming beaten down on me, or he's following me, or he's looking at me, or scowling at me, it's got, you know, not a lot, Mike, so I guess the answer I got for you is there's not a lot, but we try to nip that quick, we don't want that, the faster than it turn into bullying.
Well, good, 'cause I mean, I noticed one thing about the current situation is, it's usually a student, that student's usually in some type of conflict with the school, and it looks like the schools don't act inappropriately to de-escalate that conflict, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
We can do all the things in the world, right, but if it, it comes down to what's in people's minds sometimes, so, thank you.
And we noted, Mike, and also will tell you, that the resources that this board's helped put in place, SROs, I mean, I got an SR on the building every day, guys, I mean, very rarely do I have an SRO in, in the building, and then we've got that extra counselor, that has been huge over here, Tori was fantastic with defusing things and talking kids, working with drama, that can build into those problems, so she's been fantastic, sorry.
And I think one of the important things from the very beginning of the school year is making sure students are aware of the different, students and parents are aware of the different avenues to report what they see, you know, there's a lot, kids are sneaky, and, and, you know, there's a lot that can be, can go on unnoticed by adults, but the students know what's going on, and so to encourage them to reach out when they see something and say something, you know, it helps to just keep us in the loop and try to resolve it before it gets out of hand.
The three are recognize, report, and remedy, right?
I, I, you know, here's the other thing, we are very fortunate to have guys like Nate Birch, Ray Hauser, who's built, who they're, and got excess guys coming in, they're building relationships with these kids, right, I think the kids trust them, they, they can lean on them, and even kids that might kinda get close to that line, or maybe cross the line, they feel confident, they, they see something like that big, they'll share with them, like, and I've, now that's something I'm proud for our student body, too, so, you know, they help a lot, keep an eye on ears on things, make sure that things don't blow up in big, into bigger things.
And, and back to the vaping conversation, we did have a meeting right before the end of school with county entities about that, that is an ongoing problem that we see throughout, and so we were all trying to get on the same page as far as what that progressive discipline is, ultimately, we don't want kids to vape, and even more importantly, we don't want them to have it at school, because then that leads to other students who may not have, you know, access to that stuff, it's, it's an influence, so we're trying to get that out of the schools as best as possible.
Just, just a clerical thing, too, this is, this would be our, this is student handbook, I know it says parent handbook, but it's what we call our student handbook, I think it says that on the front cover here, if that comes up, but, yeah, I just wanna make sure it's listed on our student handbook.
Anybody else? Thanks, Dr. Libby.
Thank you.
Technology handbook, first reading, or just second?
Yeah, this is the first one for that, too, and so that was, if you have questions, Tony is the one you can ask about that, so.
Absolutely, no changes from last year. Except for the logo needs to be changed.
We're gonna get that all taken care of.
I was so excited, there were no changes that needed to be made, I overlooked the logo.
Okay, so this is the first reading, we'll move on to superintendent's comments, board's in your packet, if you wanna take a hard look at it before the next meeting.
So, a few things, since the school year's ended, a lot of really good things have happened, so, you know, once again, graduation went great, but we had a lot of success at the state level, and I always worry about recognizing students, because there's a good chance I'll forget one, and that's unintentional, but in the girls' state track meet, Olivia Aller had competed in that, in the boys' state track meet, Kobe Hacker in the high jump, Dominic Lincoln in the one-ten hurdles, and then our four-by-four relay team of Cummins, Reed, Reem, Jones, and Lincoln finished tenth, and I will tell you that eight of those schools that finished above us in that relay are six-A schools, so when you're talking about, you know, coming from a two-A school, and, and there's no classes in, in track and field, and so, you know, to put a relay team together that's competitive with, you know, the big boys is pretty impressive, so congratulations to all the gentlemen, and then, and then Dominic Lincoln ended up finishing fourth overall in the three-hundred hurdles, which is impressive, so congratulations to them, and then Owen, and I'm probably gonna say his last name wrong, Kreschwitz?
Yep.
Okay, he competed in the golf state tournament today, and golf is frustrating enough, and when you add eighteen holes walking in a hundred-and-five-plus heat index, he ended up shooting a, an eighty-one, which I know he was hoping for better, but, I mean, in those conditions, that's incredible, so congratulations to all those students, and then lastly, the state of Indiana was putting together, basically, a network of STEM schools around the state, and they have four workshops over the summer, and our, one of our teams was invited to present, so today, Sue Janegy, Rachel Bushong, Joel Ikenhour, Mary Randall, and Patty Good, all traveled to Plymouth and presented on what we're doing, and giving other schools looking to become STEM certified some more information, and I did hear that the IDUE was trying to poach some of our people away from us, and so that might be the last time I'm sending them over to, to present, so, really, great experience, a great opportunity to promote what we're doing, so wanna thank them for their efforts, too.
Board comments?
So, Tony, you, you said that your logo, and MES has the same logo, and we need to purge all non-approved logos, and, and then get a common theme for how our handbooks are to be, because they're all different, if we're gonna be a class outfit, then everybody should be following the exact same pattern, you know, one document style, every one of them has a different document style, so, all handbooks should be identical in, in their presentation, it's just the content will be matched up how it's best suited for that particular institute.
Thank you, good point, Mr. Raymer, anybody else?
Yeah, I wanna thank you guys for getting board docs in place, that's a.
Yes, thank you.
We've gone through hundreds of policies, right, you're right, Brian, the format, stuff like that, but I think it all starts with how this is.
Exactly.
We operate on, have rev control, right, use standard formats, I Google docs and stuff, right, meaning, man, I don't say nothing to get on my computer, you know, you know, just that, I appreciate that, I think that's a good start for us, especially with policy and stuff, but format, definitely.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a couple, I'm not sure Kyle is even aware of this, or Dr. Libby, but I, I recently saw that Jack Ruplee was selected as an assistant coach at the North-South, for the North-South baseball series, which is sponsored by the High School Baseball Coaches Association, so that's another honor, and then finally, just compliments and praise to all that had anything to do with the graduation, I've now been to three or four, and it just makes me proud to be in this community, it's a really special event, so, thank you.
Anybody else? I would echo Mr. Aspiset's comment on graduation, I can't even begin to think of my worth at that, and kudos to the kids, I mean, it was their graduation, they, they did a wonderful job, also, good luck to the FFA, their Twiz Bowl in Indianapolis, and just another quick note on Heartland, you know, there's an awful lot of people that work three and a half years to try and pull that thing off, and I'm, I'm here to tell you, that's one of the biggest disappointments I've had since I've sat on this board to watch that thing fail, so hopefully, you know, the adults will get their training center that they need, that will help Wabash County, it's just unfortunate that it had to come to that, so.
Dave, I'll even go further, like, you were certainly a big part of that, you spent a lot of time, you and Mark, so, thank you for, and it may not be gone, it may not, but.
Right.
Didn't get lost on me, no matter what.
Right, well, and, and again, it's two, two separate things, you know, and there is a possibility that we'll still get a Wabash County Adult Training Center.
Sure.
But the opportunity for the high school kids to get that secondary training right there on the campus is kinda just evaporated, so. With that, and anybody else? Okay, motion to adjourn, and then we'll take a short, real short break, and then gather in Kyle's office for the executive session.
I'll motion.
Mr. Hensley, Mr. Raymer, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.